Mr. Keegan, you can give us a proper title of, I know Esser's in there and ARP. All set?
Okay, good evening and thank you all for coming in tonight, 5:30 to hold a public meeting and participate in the public meeting on the American Rescue Plan North Syracuse's School District's update on spending of the ARP Esser III and ARP Esser State Reserves. This is a requirement from New York State Department as part of the dispersment of these funds and use of them throughout the school year. So we're open and as you'll see at the end, we'll have opportunities for some public comment and input regarding how we'll move forward with these funds. First, we have two funds and it's really interesting to, it's important to understand that they are, they're fixed windows of time where we find, we receive this funding with sunset points that are approaching. ARP Esser III is funded, received directly from the federal government. The total funding over several years is 9.5 million and ARP Esser State Reserves is funding received from New York State. Total ARP Esser State Reserves is 1.9 million. These funds are distributed over several years. And the first one is set to expire this September. The second one is set to expire September of 24. The purpose of these funds were really what's probably best described as stabilization funds throughout COVID is new challenges, demands and pressure were put on schools to deliver instruction, keep schools safe and support students in their learning through a very difficult time. As you see here bolted out, the first is address loss and structural time, close academic performance gaps. The second was meet students' social, emotional, mental health needs. Third, address disparities in access to educational opportunity. They were exacerbated by the coronavirus pandemic. And to equally expand opportunity for students who need it most and implement evidence-based interventions within multi-tiered support systems. All of those items were designed to support students, provide technology, provide access to additional classroom time, instructional time in the summer after school tutoring. And probably the, the most important, most comprehensive here is the last one, a multi-tiered system of support, which include counselors, social workers, additional TAs and classroom instructional specialists to evaluate, determine what students need and provide additional support and resources. Okay, I'm gonna let you do this one.
As you can see, we have a, a budget for the 9.5 million that Chris referenced for ARP Esser III. And we did something a little different with ARP. As you guys remember, we had the Cursa funds that are coming to an end now. But with ARP, we, we realized during COVID that we just did not have the classroom furniture that was appropriate for creating flexible learning spaces. And really those sidearm desks that we have in so many of our secondary buildings were a real challenge for us. And so we are, we're investing quite a bit of money in furnishings. Each of our schools got a budget to purchase furniture for their schools, again, creating the opportunity for separation and collaboration and really updating some furniture that needed to be updated. And also this furniture is a little easier to keep clean and healthy. Mobile technology, our, our instructional staff has had needs that they never had before in dealing with one-to-one technology in the classroom and their ability to take a device home and to, and to be mobile within the building. So we continue to support our teachers and, and staff with mobile devices. As you can see, the big, the big money that was being supported with ARP Esser III was additional positions. We added a lot of personnel and have sustained those folks because we know that, we say it all the time in the budget presentations, that the single most important thing we do is put an adult in front of children and, and we were not going to leave these funds unspent when we could get the additional human resources we needed to assist our, our students. And so that's the next item in there at 5.1 million. And then professional development, it, it, it seems like a small amount of money, but it's a small supplement to the extensive professional development work that we already have underway. Now, the state reserves, as, as Dr. Leahy indicated, the state reserves are received directly from New York State. I will say this, that the state got the money directly from the federal government and passed it through to us. But here we spent it a little differently. Chris talked about multi-tiered systems of support. We're spending about $225,000 on that. Again, more professional development. And you'll notice the theme there. We've really worked hard with professional development on mental health and restorative practices. Additional support for family engagement. There's a family engagement counselor being paid for there. And then extra pay and benefits for instructional support work that, as Dr. Leahy mentioned, we're trying after school and summer programming to support our kids and close those instructional gaps that were caused during COVID. And then additional positions again to support academic and social emotional needs of students, primarily instructional staff, counselors and social workers. And that covers the entire budget and, and actual spending. These have been updated for actual spending for the ARP programs, state and federal. So there were a lot of hoops we had to jump through and we've reported to this, this to you folks before, but we had to assign certain, assign certain assurances with New York State. We had to have the funding approved. We've had to post, post information on our website and explain how money, how ARP spending would be, ARP funds would be expended. And we, we included discussions about ARP and Cursa in our budget presentations. And then one of the important things we want to do is make sure we see public comment from parents, teachers and other stakeholders. And that's why we're having this public hearing tonight, so that people can comment if they would like to. And that kind of leads us into questions and answers. So we've got a microphone here, Chris, you could make available if anybody wants.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, comments, just general questions, this is a great time to ask and we'll be happy to answer the best of our ability. But part of this receiving these funds is to get input from our public, our community regarding any concerns, thoughts or suggestions as we move forward. Okay, anybody from the board would like to ask any questions or comment?
Just timing of when, when we were, people were moving from ARP, Cursa to ARP. And so there's a little bit of trying to sustain those activities through two different grant programs. And so the effort really was there were some things in the 22, 23 school year that were being paid for under Cursa that we're now covering under ARP. Great question.
The, the, well, the other slides, there are both the slides mentioned, additional positions, support, family engagement. And then the other slide mentions additional positions add to the budget, please support. So when the manager is over, right, 2024, is those positions going away? Are they still going to be funded the best ability?
One of our, one of our things that we have been hoping and praying for is that additional foundation aid that we got in connection with the, the last couple of years budgets and last year for the 23, 24 school year, the year we're in right now. We got a significant increase in foundation aid. And so our goal is to have sustained and, and we did as many of those positions as we possibly could. And when we do the budget this year, we'll reevaluate, we'll look at, you know, look at where we are. And again, try to, as you said, Matt, try to sustain as many positions as we possibly can with the available funding.
Right. All right. Well, thank you.
I have a question about, if you want to go back one more slide or one forward, one more slide. Sorry, I thought we were on the back one more. That one. No, it's okay. So the classroom furniture purchases, just going back to that, from 22 to 23 to 23, 24, there's a huge jump. Is that strictly just like the desks for, for all the schools?
You know what's, you know what's funny about that is that I had, I don't know how to say this any, any other way other than we've, we haven't bought furniture in such a long time as a school district that we went through a pretty rigorous process to vet vendors, to hear about different ideas for furniture. And then we kind of didn't, we, we didn't want everybody to buy furniture at once. We wanted to experiment with it. So we bought a classroom or two, a building or two, to learn about the furniture and see how it worked. And actually, as crazy as it sounds, we bought some furniture for one building and said, you know what? This, this probably wasn't the right purchase, but we can use that. It's better suited for this grade level. So by moving a little slowly in the inception or the beginnings of the process, we learned a lot about school furniture. And that's why you're seeing us kind of move slowly into buying $4 million worth of furniture. It's, it's a lot of money.
Just to piggyback off that comment, I would say the majority of schools that I see have like furniture from the seventies. And we are an educational institution. We care about our students. And I think that, you know, furniture is something that we don't always buy. And when we have the opportunity to, and then I know I'm saying this to a person who thinks about money because I always like kind of had this discussion with the person who's in charge of money in my district. It's you get what you pay for. We could get something that we put together for $50 that'll last a year. Or we could get something that's going to be sturdy and lasts several years and be a great fit for our students. So, and I love to see that you tried it and then went forward from there because that's, makes a difference. We've gotten furniture and it wasn't what we expected, but you're able to use elsewhere.
No other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Yeah. Okay. So the, the public hearing on the ARP and Esser is adjourned. Thank you.
Please come out of the executive session. Most from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing it all in favor, pose, we are out of executive session. And we are looking at a food service presentation. So it's all yours when you're ready. That doesn't look like a food service.
Well, my Mr. Keegan is getting that pulled up. I see some new faces, so I'll just introduce myself. My name's Wendy Swift. I am the OCM Bosse's Food Service Director. And I've been working in school food service for about thirty years and working for North Syracuse for eleven or twelve. Time flies. So I'm here tonight, actually, with good news. We had a really good year, and I just want to share some of that information with you and discuss what we're looking at doing next year. So I show you this slide every year. This is our annual meal count showing kind of where we stand in terms of participation from the students. And as you can see, that that big spike in twenty one twenty two was when we were feeding all students for free through the federal government, thanks to COVID funds. This year, we went back to normal operations with free and reduced and then paid students. And we really held their own with meal counts. A lot of the students that we were we were feeding during COVID, I think parents saw some value in the cost of a school lunch and breakfast and decided to stay with the program and participate daily. This slide shows our state and federal revenue. And of course, going back to the twenty one twenty two school year, we had that big spike in revenue due to meals being free for all and being reimbursed at the free reimbursement rate. And again, this year, we obviously we held our own because our participation rates were up. This is our year end fund balance that we report on the S T three report. And again, you see that large spike due to free and reduced meals. And I'll talk in a little bit about what we were able to do with some of that additional money that we received last year from participation rates. We really have been operating over the last ten years. What do you like to say? We use pretty much, yes. So we were able to purchase some very needed equipment that we have just been kind of piecing together and cobbing together. So we were able to get some new convection ovens. We replaced some serving line units, and I will show you pictures of those in just a little bit. We replaced some hot boxes that we use to transport food to other feeding sites such as Saint Rose, Bosse's, Main Street. We shared in the replacement cost for a new key box system with maintenance, and some of you are probably thinking, what is a key box system? But we're able to lock our keys in there at night and badge in and out if need be, and that allows maintenance if a freezer or something goes down overnight to have access to our keys, but making it secure. We have priced in our in the process of having milk coolers delivered in the fall. I'm sure, just like with any of you trying to buy a new vehicle in the last year or two, there is no equipment to be had, no vehicles to be had. So we are ordering equipment and waiting anywhere from six to eight months for the products to be delivered and dropped in place. This year, we really wanted to focus on, since we had some extra money, trying to educate the students in line, trying to teach them a little bit about fruits, vegetables, what a proper portion size is. So we ordered a lot of posters and paraphernalia to put up around the serving lines. And I can see why we haven't done that in the past. That posters are very expensive. But we got nice posters that will last for years to come. And one of the new things that we have done, and we'll be talking a little bit more about this down the road, but we have a Bosse's dietitian that comes into the district once a week to help us with allergens, working directly with the nurses, working with parents that may have kids that have severe allergies. And she's a good support for us. She helps to develop recipes. We are bringing her in two days a week next year, and she will also be helping us with a grant that we received this year. So this is some of the equipment we purchased. The old display case on the left, from day one, I hated these things. The doors slide left and right. The kids pinch their arms in the door. The Board of Health hates the creases. They're hard to clean out, the plastic cracks. So they're always a worry for health inspections. We updated to these new open air display cases on the right. It looks a little bit more like a convenience store or a college dining hall, grab and go dining hall. And it just kind of elevated the look of of the kitchens. And I think the most important thing about this new cabinet was, as you can see, the staff noticed instantly that the students were eating more fruits and vegetables because they could see them, they could reach them, and kind of took them by surprise. They had to work a little bit harder to get more fruits and vegetables out for the kids right away. But that's a good thing. That's what we want them eating. So back to this, the we received a grant this year, and this is what the dietitian will be helping us with. We received almost sixty eight thousand dollars to help support local farmers and buy fruits and vegetables, meats, dairy locally. And by locally, I mean within New York State, but we are really trying to focus on primarily Anadaga County and counties around right directly surrounding us. We I'm actually meeting with a number of directors tomorrow, and we're talking about the framework of how we can really go about using this money. We have always tried to use local produce in the past. The big hurdle that we face is having that produce or products delivered to us. We don't aren't really set up to be out driving around to farms and picking up product ourselves. So you should you should see more coming out about that. Like I said, we're going to be working on some newsletters. And we're looking at possibly setting up some farmers markets in the schools towards the end of the day and sharing fruits and vegetables with the kids that they can take home to their parents with recipes. So should be exciting. So this is what we have been working on the past few weeks. I don't know if any of you saw the information from the federal government that said that they are really working on trying to make more schools able to offer meals free to all students. So in April, they came out with some information saying that to do that, they would help help us with our reimbursement funds for the students that are paid within a free C E P school. I know that sounds confusing. So right now, we are drilling down and trying very diligently to make sure that we have as many schools qualified for C E P as possible. So the list in front of you, Roxelle was already in the program, Rox Middle School, Smith Road, OCM Bosse's, Main Street, Bear Road, and Allen, I'm sorry. In Main Street, we're in the program. We feel very confident we can pull Bear Road and Allen Road in, but we are also trying to pull North Syracuse Junior High and CNS Senior High into the program, which would be exceptional. Those are two of our biggest schools. We feed the most students in those schools, and we would really like to make frees meals free to all students. So one of the things we have to do for those few schools that are not able to qualify for C E P, we need to increase meal prices. So since we have had two fairly good years financially the last few years, we really don't want to increase prices too much. We have to be cognizant that food prices are going up. So Don and I worked out the numbers. We use the spreadsheets that the state Education Department provides for us, and we really feel confident that we can get away with just a nickel increase. And that that won't be too daunting for parents to take on that are having their kids eat breakfast and lunch with us. And I just, for the heck of it, I just I went on Uber Eats, and I wanted to see what the price for a Happy Meal was because I haven't bought one of those in twenty years. And it blew my mind that this McDonald's down the street. It's five dollars and seventy five cents for a Happy Meal. And we were trying to offer breakfast or lunch to a K four building for three dollars and thirty cents. Yeah, it's basically the price of a I don't have the toy.
That's four dollars.
Maybe a Snicker once in a while, but not a toy. And that's really it. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of the exciting grant that we're working on and hoping that we can pull more schools in for C E P. Does anybody have any questions in particular about C E P? I know some of you might not be familiar with the program.
I have questions, but not about that.
We can ask them.
And comments. Wendy, we don't vote on this anymore. I am overwhelmed tonight. Thank you to Xavier, to Matt, and our president for all your help to get this to happen. We pushed for this, and we pushed for this from the Legislative Committee. Xavier, you were on me. And look, hopefully, if the high school and junior high come in, this is just a miracle. Every child in our district, hopefully down the road, will have a free breakfast and a free lunch. We had a high school girl come to our legislative meeting. And her parents don't qualify. I don't I do not know that if they do. She said, I can't afford at the high school. So I'm hoping that this comes true. I know it comes through federal, but our federal government said no to us after January first. We pushed different leadership in the House of Representatives, and it came to a halt. We went to our state representatives, especially Mr. Sterpy, Mr. Mannion, and Pamela Hunter, and they got something through the state to help out on this. So they are the ones that came through for us, and I am just overjoyed. And I know you're going to pull in the junior high and the high school. Now, one other thing is for the other three schools, and we brought this up before, and Wendy, I know you took my advice and you worked hard, is how to get those parents that can get reduced lunch or free lunch, they have to fill out a paper. So I don't know. I know you tried. You went to open houses. I remember this ten years ago. But we have to let parents out there know that if you're below a certain income, your child can get reduced or free. We need to do more and more of that. I know you put it out there. I know it's on the website, but there are, I'm thinking this kid might have been able to do that. The last thing I wanted to talk about is the local farming. That's County Executive Ryan McMahon has been pushing for this local, so I'm glad you're doing it. Wendy, I know you work for other districts because I see you over to Bosse's. Thank you for what you do for our school district, and I am overjoyed tonight. What is going to happen to our children in the fall? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And maybe you can't answer this, okay, by not being in the totally immersed in the whole thing. What do you think is holding up the numbers from the junior high and the high school? Why? I mean, because if all these elementary schools are making the numbers, I mean, the same group of kids moves up to the junior high and the high school.
So basically, what allows us to offer C E P in a district or in a building is the amount of SNAP and Medicaid students. Um, I don't know that it has So basically, what allows us to offer CEP in a district or in a building is the amount of SNAP and Medicaid students.
Right.
I don't know that it has children get older. That maybe the families become more self-sufficient financially, that maybe they don't need the SNAP program. Or the child's Medicaid, you know, he grows out of whatever health issues that he's having and maybe Medicaid doesn't come into, come into play, but we literally go in monthly to the state database and we match our student database to the state's database and pull in any kid we can find. And then when we're done with that, we start going through the list by hand and looking up each kid individually. So we really struggle to find those students. A lot of the times what will hold it up is if a student has a hyphenated name or junior or you know, the third, they don't pull in. So we always look for those kids first, but I have to believe it's just as the family grows that and the students get older that they, the family becomes more financially stable.
It's also, Matt, that's the first place at the junior high where you remember when we look at free and reduced, as Wendy said, we look at those directly certified numbers. And some of our attendance zones are wealthier than others. And at the junior high is the first time that we pick up Gillette Road, which includes Lake Shore and Cicero. Some of our wealthier pieces and that brings the direct certification rate lower. And so, so that's the challenge is that the mix of all those kids together.
Grabbing from a larger pool now, right? That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
You answered that much better.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scholes, when, whenever you're ready, this is going to be all yours for the math presentation. Summer math.
Good evening. First off, my name is Nicholas Scholes. I am the director of mathematics here. Most of you guys know me, Mr. Ludden or Commissioner Ludden. It's good to meet you and but I am excited to kind of share with you a little bit of the state of mathematics in terms of where we're at, what we have done and some of the wins for this last year as well as where we're headed. So go ahead and click on to the next slide. I always think that it's important to ground ourselves in our direction. Obviously, the Board of Education recognizes and knows our district vision and mission. What you might not always recognize or see as much is the K-12 mathematics vision, which is to be the most desirable district for K-12 math instruction, opportunities and achievement in central New York. Those core values were core values that were then established as a math committee, which I think are really important because they ground us and help us, help guide us for, through everything that we determine and decide. They also helped guide all of the different priorities that we established at the beginning of last summer. So, which is what we'll go to the next slide. What I want to do, I think that sometimes when you hear a presentation, and this kind of happens in all of society, is we just keep looking forward and we don't actually address the previous presentation. So what did I actually say last year? What were some of the things that I thought were important to actually deal with? And then did we actually deal with those things? So I want to address that first. And then I want to review what happened in this year and talk about our plan for this coming year. So last summer I had a conversation or a conversation I presented to the board. What I felt like was the state of math. And at that point in time, I had been on the job for about eight or nine months and felt like there were kind of four things that were really significantly lacking at the time. One of them was professional development, specific mathematics, professional development for our five through 12 math teachers. The next one was dealing with intervention and how we were supporting both our our struggling students, our lowest level students, as well as our highest level students. The third one was curriculum. We had a K seven curriculum in place, but we did not at the eight, 12 level. And then the last one was data-driven instruction. There were benchmarks kind of in place at the time, but they were only sporadically being given. And the analysis, although was being done at times, action steps around that analysis was not systematic. And so I thought that it was important to start to put that in place. And so that's what I kind of presented to you guys at that time. And at that time, I also laid out to you what the, what I call the K-12 mathematics roadmap, which is called attend to precision, which is kind of play on words of the mathematical practice standards. One of them is attending to precision. And those five priorities, which I believe were driven through the core values that we talked about are up there on the right. And really it's culture, teachers, curriculum, intervention enrichment, and I would even add a, a third slash there or a second slash and say acceleration, no, extension, sorry. And the last one is data. And so those were the five priorities that I said, hey, this is what we have to be focused on as we move forward. And so I worked with our instructional math coach, John Wojcik, and we created a we created that roadmap and which was really a three-year plan that was as closely aligned to the strategic plan as possible. And that leads us into this year. So what happened this year? And I like the term wins. I'm a competitive person. So for me, a win is, is a really great thing. And so that's why I call it wins. I recognize that the font is a little small here, so bear with me a little bit, but you can see that each of these, for the most part, each of these are aligned to the priorities that we just talked about. So PD obviously is investing in and retaining our teachers. We've got to make sure that our teachers feel supported and feel like they have a space where they can grow. And so we partnered with the University of Rochester this year in year one of a partnership through the Warner School of Education. They have a really long title, but they're Center for Professional Development and School Reform. It is a really great organization that I felt like provided some great professional development. Much more on the theoretical approach this year. And so I'll talk a little bit about that in a future slide, but think what does best practice in mathematics look like? Some of our teachers struggled a little bit with, hey, that theory is great, Nick. Or Melissa or Mary Ann, our presenters, but how does that look in practice? What does that look like for me sitting in my room needing, having an algebra regent at the end of it? And so I'm excited to move into year two and I'll talk about that in a second. We also paired up with a professor from Syracuse University and provided direct professional development to a fifth grade team at Roxborough Road Middle School. And John Wojcik continues to do some really great PD. Not only in the summer, but I'm going to jump down to the far right, which it talks about lab classrooms. He just went through cohort one, which was eight teachers that we had an opportunity to really invest a little bit more time and energy. These are teachers that completely volunteer on their own. John Wojcik asked these teachers, hey, do you want to be a part of this kind of feed, like classroom walkthrough and feedback cycle? And it was a just really neat opportunity for these teachers to work together, to collaborate. And these are teachers all from all the different elementary schools. And so he did cohort one this year. He's already has a group for cohort two, cohort two next year. So that's some of the exciting things that he's doing. In AIS, we went from a two out of every four model to a four out of every four model at both of our middle schools, which I thought was a really big, it was a big change, but a change that I thought really helped support our lowest level students. We also piloted two resources at the five, seven ELA AIS level. So you might say, well, you're the director of math. Why, why are you dealing with ELA? I oversee five, 12 AIS as well, both ELA and mathematics. So I work with the ELA AIS teachers at the five, 12 level. And we had the opportunity to pilot two resources. And, and really are getting the opportunity now to use both of those resources because we use, we're using one of them at the eight, nine level. We're using another one at the five, eight level. And, and teachers are taking off and running with them. The, there's one other bullet. I told Ms. Herrera that I, I kind of left off a bullet. Under AIS is where I would put it. We also instituted Algebra Workshop at the junior high, which I, which was a really big deal. We've had Algebra Two Workshop and Geometry Workshop at the high school, but this year we started Algebra Workshop. And this coming year in 2324, we're actually starting eighth grade workshop. These are kind of a shift in focus and mindset around us. Having at one point, something called eighth grade AIS and ninth grade AIS. We've changed that mindset to pre-teaching topics and really being a little bit more intentional around the data and calling it math workshop for our struggling students. We, in DDI, we established essential, essential standards that were kind of already in place, but we refined and got a little bit better at those. But what I'm really proud of at the K, really K, almost eight level, so I'll say K eight, is we leveraged our CTT for the first time with analysis and action steps taken around district benchmarks. So we have these common district benchmarks. And now because there are collaborative team time in, in all of the elementary schools and both middle schools, we have the opportunity to look at that data. This year we used Mastery Connect. Next year, half of the group is using Mastery Connect. The next half is using Edoc Trina. And get an opportunity to really analyze that data. On the curriculum side, I, I put use of INTO and you might say, well, Nick, you've been using INTO for four years. Why would you say that is a win this year? Absolutely, this was a win. And what I mean by that is we bought INTO in the middle of COVID. And so this was the, what you could make an argument with is the very first year that INTO was fully implemented with no, you know, no strings attached, we'll call it. And I really, really was impressed with how our teachers used it, implemented it, recognized areas that needed support to meet state level standards, thought they did an amazing job. We established an eight, 12 math committee to then find two pilot resources. And this coming year, we are doing a pilot in both eighth grade and the algebra level. And I'll explain that in just a second. Extension opportunities, we did MathCon. The board members that were here, remember that we recognized the top 10 MathCon participants in fourth grade. And then we were also preparing some extension opportunities for next year, which was kind of a win this year because it got us excited about what we're doing next year. So those are the wins in 2223. I wanted to show three different graphs real quick. Because New York State three through eight assessments are not out. I cannot show that, but I can show regents data. And what I, what I'd love to show you here, and this is the most exciting one of the three. I'd like for you to look at the dark red. The dark red was last year's regions data. The orange was our last year of regions data before COVID. So this is what we were before COVID. This was what we, the first year really where regions were established at dark red. And this dark blue is where we were this year. Pretty exciting to see the shift of literally moving that two, 14 number and flipping that to be many more students achieving at a higher level. And in fact, the average on the algebra test was seven points different from last year to this year. So that's a, that's a very, very significant jump. I mean, that's not like a little jump. That's a really, really significant jump. So really excited about that. You asked why? I think Algebra Workshop is a, is a part of that. I think that our algebra teachers just really recognized the importance of coming like this year, we're out of COVID. That's not an excuse anymore. We need to buckle down. We need to really work through this. And it, it really shows. So really proud of the work that they have done around that. The next two slides are Algebra Two and Geometry. And these slides show basically that we're staying kind of status quo, both in Algebra Two. And when you see geometry, you'll see both the dark red or maroon and the blue looking very similar from one year to the next. And so you might ask, well, what do you, how do you got to, how do you got to deal with that? And I think that that's a really important deal. I think that showing our teachers this data, math, math teachers love data. And they also love a challenge and, and seeing this. I'm excited to show them this because it's only going to make them want to continue to grow, continue to excel their kids to the highest level possible. And I also think that let's go to the next slide. I, I think that this next part, I'm going to deal with the middle box first, professional development. We talked a lot at the theory level with math instruction last year in the first year of the partnership with University of Rochester. This year is practice. So what does this now look like in your classroom? And overwhelmingly, it was junior high and, and the high school being involved in this University of Rochester work. Obviously, the middle school is also involved, but these are teachers who have their certification in mathematics and they were just, they, they wanted math professional development so bad. And I think that a lot of them have expressed a lot of interest in this year too, because they were, there was some tension around the feeling of this being just theoretical. Like, I don't know how this gets me anywhere. And so I'm really excited about this year with the partnership. We're going to continue to work with Dr. Sharp, who is from SU. We're doing the, the transition into Edoc Trina, I think is going to be really unique. And I think that I'm excited about that moving up into the high school. High school teachers want to use classroom data at a more effective level and Edoc Trina provides us a tool to be able to do that. And then I talked about the lab classrooms cohort two. We have, we're going to be working on that eighth grade and algebra pilot. There's two pilots that we're doing. We did just an absolute amazing work the eight, 12 math committee did with narrowing these two pilots down. Taking all of the pilots through a rubric that we didn't even necessarily have to do because that rubric is supposed to be after you go through a pilot. But we had five resources that we had to, we wanted to review because we didn't want to pilot all five resources. And they, they meticulously went through it. We took a common unit and worked ourselves all the way down that common unit and all the five resources. And I just really was extremely impressed at this eight, 12 math committee and how hard they worked at trying to do something that they knew was critically important to moving forward and that their peers were going to ask about, like, hey, what's the committee doing? What do you, you know, what's this look like? We're going to look, start looking at essential standards for eight through 12th grade. That work really hasn't fully been done. We're going to take some next steps with A two and Geo because obviously right now we're just doing eighth grade and algebra. What is the movement into A two and Geo? And number sense fluency at the K four level. If you look at our state data and specifically our Ames web, we are struggling not just as a district, but as a district in comparison to other districts around number sense. And so we found a really great fluency screener that is going to be our beginning of year benchmark. Next year, we're removing the old beginning of year benchmark. That's going to be our new one. And it is, and then kind of optional moving forward after that. And I think it is going to be some a really great tool for our K four teachers to be able to assess how students are improving, monitoring their progress in number sense. And finally, maybe the most kind of wow, exciting, flashy thing that we're going to be doing is some pretty extensive extension opportunities next year. So we are expanding MathCon up into some upper grade levels. I haven't quite figured out how far. But it could be as high as ninth grade. But we're going to expand MathCon. We're going to be doing middle school math league at all three buildings next year. So when I say all three, I mean Roxborough Road, Gillette Road and eighth grade at the junior high. I have three different math league advisors who are all interested in leading that work. So I'm really excited about doing middle school math league, which we are the only, really the only big district that's not participating right now. So we're going to be participating next year. I'm going to be very brief with this, but we're working on the potential of an elementary school math day. And I'm going to leave that there. And then is that done?
That was me.
Okay.
No, 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 I was
Oh, okay.
Getting ready for a question.
Oh, or just, or just stop talking Nick, because you've talked too much. And, and finally, I got a really neat opportunity. And uh and finally, um I got a really neat opportunity to meet with a lady who basically sat in John Wojcicki's position about fifteen years ago and um set up by Commissioner Crabtree. And uh this is um she gave me some really great ideas about the potential of bringing back middle school math match, and I hope to be doing that too. So those are our next steps. And that is all I have for you. Questions?
And and I apologize, I.
It's all right. I thought you were saying time, time.
Not at all. May I? I I just, I just, when you say number cents, can you tell me what we're talking about? And then tell me what data did you look at to determine that we were weak in number cents?
Yeah. So um the easiest way to look at uh the data when you start to compare districts is New York State gap analysis data through the BOSIs. So um sending Rick uh through um Level One State Reporting Data allows us to look at gap analysis from our district and then how we compare to the region, how we compare to the BOSIs.
Come about in the three-eight testing though.
In the three-eight testing, exactly. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that that's all right, because.
Three through eight testing.
Because my my other question, that that's what I was wondering, we're looking at the three-eight testing and you said we'll get that data, that usually comes in the fall.
It usually comes, uh actually, the very first time that we get to see it is the first or second week in August, usually. Uh and um we were uh provided some information that uh that will be later this year, which is really disappointing, but um yes.
So congrats uh to all of us for the Algebra One uh data you showed us. That's fantastic. So my my question is, and you'll have to help me here, um three-eight testing, eighth grade in particular, eighth grade math, back when I looked at it, there wasn't a real I wanted the word nexus is right or not between grade eight, the eighth grade assessment and Algebra One. Has that gotten any better? Because I've never, you know, never, I never saw it as an indicator of success in Algebra One, which is a high-stake test or high school credit for graduation, which is what we're here to do, increase graduation rates. So I've always found the three-eight testing a bit flawed, especially in math and especially in grade eight math. I don't know if that's gotten better as an indicator of where we, because we base our AIS on three-eight testing. And that's supposed to be the intervention that brings us to the high school credit in the math course. So I'm wondering if this, so this is not your fault, I'm picking on the state, I guess, but.
Yeah, I I would love to answer it, though, if you don't mind.
Yes, I'll stop.
So uh a a couple, a couple of things I'd say, one, um we definitely use state testing to help support AIS, but we also use Ames Web. So we don't just use that as a metric, we use Ames Web, which is a universal screener. So it's not just looking at state data, it's nationally normed, right, which helps us. So just because a student performs one way in a New York State test doesn't uh directly put them in AIS or not. Secondly, I'd say that the eighth grade test is um measured on a four-point scale, one, two, three, or four, right? Which which three is said to be proficient, four is considered, you know, above proficiency, um and two and one. Uh the Regents test is on a five-point scale. And that five, that third point in the Regents is sixty-five to usually like seventy-nine. So from sixty-five to seventy-nine on a Regents test and the Algebra Regents actually is reflected as a two on the New York State assessment. And so I think that looking at the New York State assessment only by one, twos, threes, and fours is a little bit harder to kind of um draw direct crosswalk from one to the other. That would be my answer to that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other questions, comments?
Who knows, I would ask something.
I figured you're the reason I'm standing up here.
Figured, and I didn't tell you what it was, did I? All right. Algebra one, geometry, algebra two, calculus, whatever. Do all of us do that, or have we changed and gone from Algebra one to Algebra two, then geometry? Or are just some of the kids doing that in our district?
So a general track student goes Algebra one, Algebra two, geometry. An advanced track or accelerated track student goes Algebra one, geometry, Algebra two, which means all of our students in our district take Algebra two in tenth grade, no matter what. Well, some of those kids are on accelerated track because they took geometry at the junior high. Those um those geometry numbers too are not uh the geometry numbers I showed you are only high school geometry numbers, not junior high. I intentionally pulled them out because those are our um honors level kids and uh I wanted to just look at um a general track kid.
Does that mean then the Algebra ones were also, you pulled the other kids out or?
So looking at your graphs, which are a couple of slides back. But if you look at your graphs, is it a safe assumption to say that, okay, you're you're, the Algebra one numbers looked really good, right? You were you were saying like, so those Algebra numbers apparently, well, they reflect Algebra two and geometry down the road, right? That's a safe assumption?
That's the assumption, yeah. But so um last year, so the way that you would then extrapolate that is you'd go back to eighth grade, right? And you'd say, well, we're our eighth grade kids. The problem is last year's eighth grade test was the very first year we had algebra students take the eighth grade exam. Therefore, it's almost impossible to look back at eighth grade and determine, is this just a really high-functioning cohort? Or is this something different? Because what you're describing is a high-functioning cohort of students rather than potentially a change in the way that we're instructing or um more efficient instruction. Adding stuff like a workshop class, all those different types of things that could be also um impacting this. I and I I can't say that usually that large of a jump is usually a higher, a just a highly functioning cohort.
Right. So at this point, you can't tell if this is going to be the norm or if this, you just hit the lucky.
Correct.
Right, you hit the lucky, right.
I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, I s- I still had some more. Yes, one was not enough. Very, very pleased. I remember your presentation last year is that we are looking at accelerated students in this district and doing something for them. Um I was a PSC on math teacher in this school district. I worked with the below average. But I am so happy that this district is now working with a seller. Nick, that's a plus. One thing I found was vocabulary at the elementary level is that, and we haven't got the results back, I I told you that, we're not going to get them back for a while because they have not decided where the cutoff points are. When they take that test at third grade or fourth grade, it's usually the vocabulary that they don't understand. They don't know, understand what their question, what the question is being asked. Are we doing some things with vocabulary?
So I'll I'll say not in an intentional systematic way. I am very, so the the way that we're doing quote vocabulary is that we really emphasized what is called a three reads routine at the elementary level. And the problem-solving uh method that our K-seven math um curriculum resource uses is called three reads. And and that has been emphasized not only in the elementary newsletter, but also in all of the different um CTTs that I attend and the department meetings that I attend, that we need to really leverage the three reads routine. Now, a three reads routine says, don't be scared at a um at a word problem. That that shouldn't scare you. Read it the first time for understanding, read it the second time for um quantities and units. Read it a third time to determine what's actually being asked. And in that, I believe we are connecting the struggle that you're talking about in terms of looking at a word problem and our students just, and and this is not a North Syracuse specific problem. This is a problem that exists everywhere. You see three lines on a word problem and you're like, I'm done. And I I we have to get away from that. And I think a three reads routine breaks it down to a level that um it's not as scary for students. And so that's what I have, what we have focused on. I I cannot specifically say that we focus on vocabulary the way that you're describing.
And my last thing, and I brought this up. I wish with organizational chart that you were responsible for elementary AIS. I just uh wish you were. I I know that most of the AIS teachers are reading, they have to have a degree in that. If you had some math people, as we did thirty years ago in the elementary with a lot of background in math, they don't need a degree working with those kids. I I just think we would make better um progress. That's not you. Thank you.
Just one more quick one.
Yeah.
Um remember the slide you wanted to add the second slash, like enrichment and advancement? What's the difference?
Oh, thank you. Uh so enrichment is for all kids. Uh extension is what I would call, yep. No, because I accidentally, I think I said advancement. Extension is for our highest achieving students. Uh I I think that that's a really important distinction that a lot of people say, oh, I want my kid to be in enrichment. Well, we should want all of our kids to be enriched. And so something like uh the Elementary School Math Day is an enrichment opportunity. All students seeing mathematics outside of their math classroom is something that all students should have. But an extension opportunity is, these are the highest level students, those students, those are our fourth grade MathCon students. Those students um achieved at the highest level. And if they're achieving at the highest level, we might not be able to provide what they need just basically, or or in our basic um curriculum resource. We have to provide something else. And so that is why those extension opportunities. So yeah, thank you for that.
Other questions? Mr. Schultz, I want to thank you again for what's always a exciting and no, it's 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 a great presentation. You show your enthusiasm and I didn't go unnoticed the, I mean, I appreciate the, I didn't realize until the question was asked that you pulled the accelerated out of those graphs and that. I commend you for that because I've seen it done the other way in other places, just to fluff the data and you didn't do that. So I I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. Yeah. We're at the portion of the meeting for comments from the audience. As usual, I'll just read a quick uh little bit about our rules of order here. And these are public meetings and we welcome the public to attend and observe. In North Syracuse, we do set aside portion of time for comments from the public. We will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion. Issues involving particularly students or employees are not permissible during the public meeting. And we do a lot, three minutes per member. Uh with regards to the uh issues involving uh specific employees or students, I I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. It was brought to my attention by multiple sources that uh we had a speaker sing a lot of staff member two meetings ago. And it's uh that's on me. I was remiss in not gaveling that and stopping that. So I just want to remind speakers, we do not single out staff or any personnel in our comments. And uh I do apologize for doing that or not, not uh catching that one sooner. So as we move forward, again, we will have the district clerk run the timer for three minutes. When I hear that timer, I will tap the gavel. Nice and quiet, but I will uh I'll be a little maybe gun shy with this, just to make sure uh I don't make that mistake again. So with that, having said all that, we will begin with Heather Calabria. Would like to speak first. Thank you.
So we are supposed to be teaching our children math, science, history, reading and writing, as well as useful life skills such as civics. But they do not have the vocabulary they should have. They can't sign their name. And we took drivers out of the school, but somehow it is acceptable to teach falsified history and science and ideologies. The more you confuse children, the less children we will have as you're promoting chaos and destruction of the nuclear family and depopulation, which is not safe nor healthy for anyone. You're supposed to be teaching a, you're supposed to be having a safe and healthy environment, but it's anything but when you deny truth and teach propaganda. When I was young, we were raised to be tough, and there was a saying that should still mean something. Sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt. But for some reason, we have given him everyone's feelings over facts. In doing so, we have created a weakened society with younger generation overly ruled about feelings, mentally ill and gender confused and feeling entitled. Where are the adults in our community? I did mention the words trans life as matter to my husband, and he did say, was that all that you can come up with? Where you have nothing intelligent to say. But it is no wonder, as I do have to re-educate my son every day after he comes home from school here. I, as a parent, have to to re-educate him. It is not adult behavior to allow false beliefs. We cannot change our race. We cannot change our species, and you cannot change your gender. To say so is more than wrong. It is destructive, unsafe, unhealthy, abusive, and pedophilia. No one is born in the wrong body. There are lots of trans coming out now that are detransitioning after being persuaded into something that was beyond unsafe and promoting hormone blockers. What has happened to those that were told they can change their gender? Here are the facts. They have a decreased life expectancy, premature death from heart attacks, premature death from pulmonary embolisms, bone damage, osteoporosis checks daily, possible liver damage, increased mental health complications, actually a much greater risk of suicide after transitioning. That is actually the truth. Increased chances of mood syndromes, higher rates of psychosis, brain development, stunted hormone blockers, reduced chance for lifelong sexual pleasure and sterilization. Facts do matter and children's lives do matter. Children are our future and we need to teach appropriate material for children to thrive. I do want you to ask, not asking a pronoun at any age to a child. All of these behaviors are anti-Christian behaviors and Marxist. You have elected positions in the United States of America, which is a constitutional republic. Yours oath states, you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York and will faithfully discharge duties as a member of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability. You can believe in socialism all you want, but if you want to practice it and elect a position, you have broken your oath. By the way, I do want to let you know, Karl Marx was actually an atheist that never worked a day in his life, lived in his parents' basement, never showered and had scabs all over his body. Is that really somebody you want to follow?
Three minutes, please. Your comments can be submitted in writing to the clerk and she'll make sure we receive that all. Next speaker is Jessica Soulier.
Your board members yet again have gone against policy two-one-six-zero. Your board members are promoting controversy where it is not necessary in making this be something it is not about. The fact that the board continues to not address this shows the direction and that the parents in the public have no merit in your eyes. You refuse to answer specific questions directed to you when we are instructed to do so. There is no accountability or communication. I emailed you all and asked what you intended to do in regards to the direct disregard and direct bias of your board members that have gone in record against doing so, and I got no response in that. Everything I was at that I asked was either circumvented or I will have to run circles around to accomplish anything. Taxpayers and parents demand that policy five-three-one-one-eight be disseminated to all taxpayers in the district. We stand by and are proud of your policy like you say you are. You should have no problem in doing that. Send it to every parent with all of our class assignments and school information in August. We demand that this policy be up for discussion. Parents legally, morally, and ethically have an obligation to have a say and to be included, especially when our children's private parts are exposed, when we are, they are taking their clothes off, while they're in the same sleeping quarters and while they are physically competing with each other. Create an open forum where we can talk collaboratively. The common misconception that five-three-one-one-eight is a directive to New York State. I will read the disclaimer from New York State Legal Update. Quote, "This update, which is intended to be both a resource and an important reminder for New York State Public Schools to adhere for the Dignity for All Act Student or the Students Act. Please evaluate each resource to determine if it is developmentally and age-appropriate for your school population. The school ed department does not endorse any of the programs cited herein. The intent of this document is to provide information only. As a result, the information contained herein is advisory only and does not necessarily represent the official legal opinion of the Commissioner of Education and the State of New York Education Department," end quote. The document that you are all citing states that it is solely the responsibility of each district to implement this, meaning policy five-three-one-one-eight is very much written by our board and our superintendent, all positions which are voted in and replaceable. The policy was written by our district. The board's primary purpose is to represent taxpayers. You are voted in by us. You solicit your new and up-for-revote members by the taxpayers. You are not here to represent the teachers' union. There are, in many fact, many areas where the teachers' union and their agendas are pushed in our school. How is it that we have people on our board that also have interest in the union as well? At what point can this be an actual two-way conversation where the board answers? Where the board answers our concerns and addresses the issue at hand. I can assure you, I am not going away. Other parents are not going away and taxpayers are more than aware now, thanks to us handing out the policy. And they're not going away either. We demand answers and change. The silent majority is speaking up. Your newsletter from July states, we are actively seeking ways to strengthen our ties with community partners. That's us. We're here. We're willing. You're not answering us. Working together, you also said, we can create an even, even more opportunities to provide enhanced support to our students. We're here. We're willing to do all that.
Hey, thank you.
Preventative, not reactive, please.
And our last speaker is Emily Suley.
Can everyone hear me okay? I am a graduate of the class of twenty twenty one from CNS and I'm here to state my concern for safety for all students. I want to share my experience in the school district and how I believe that this new transgender policy can have the possibility to ruin a life. When I was in high school, I was terrified to use a bathroom. I would hold my pee all day long and I would wait until I got home. I was afraid that someone was going to either videotape me or sexual harass me. You never know what you're going to walk in on or what could happen to you when you were in the bathroom. If it was an emergency, I would always use the nurse's office. It was a known thing amongst other students to do the same. Ask students now if they feel safe in your bathrooms. I bet they'd stay the same. The school bathrooms were not safe then and still are not safe. A lot goes on behind closed doors that you all have no idea about. You have also no idea what it's like to be in a student's position. Did you even ask the students their thoughts about this policy? Because it is about the students, right? Putting this policy in the mix to accommodate for the small percentage of students who claim to need this option is putting all students at the risk of sexual harassment. No matter if you're a boy, girl, straight, LGBTQ plus, the students are not safe. Navigating through school is confusing and hard enough. This is making it worse. Kids are questioning things that they didn't used to and kids are confused and unsure of how to make these kinds of choices that they didn't have to make before. What is it going to take for you to understand this is not safe? Another rape case, another sexual harassment, another student. I'm sorry, this should not need to happen for you to understand that this is unsafe and not to mention the number five leading cause of teen suicide. What if a male who's abusing this policy enters the girl's bathroom to do harm to her? What if a girl is not comfortable with being behind closed doors with the opposite biological gender? Where are girls protections? What if a girl does not want to see that? What if a female does not want to play sports with a biological boy? We either shut up or quit the team. Putting two opposite genders behind closed doors, especially during adolescence is unsafe and honestly the stupidest thing that you could do. This is not safe. End of story. As the Board of Education, you are to protect children, but you're putting them in harm's way, knowing that these things can happen and this is absolutely unacceptable and disgusting. You are all talk about keeping the kids safe and accommodating for everyone, but you, what you've just done completely goes against that. We should be concentrating on educating. Isn't that what schools for? As educators, our goals are to prepare students for their next steps and reach, help them reach their own goals that they have made for themselves, not confuse them more in this already confusing time. I, for one, was so excited to graduate, mostly be able to leave this school behind me. And I personally did not feel this district prepared me properly for my next steps in college. I didn't even know what MLA format was or how to double space an essay. Instead, I learned about what pronouns were and felt more and knew more about sexuality than any other subject I was taught. Perhaps academics could be more of a focus instead of this agenda that is being pushed on students. I hope that as a board of education, that you'd put the safety of your students first and that you would treat academics as a primary focus in school rather than this agenda.
Thank you. Hey, Board of Education Committee reports. Did we have any? We, we do not and we have not met. Okay. Superintendent's comments.
Over the last week, we met as superintendents, the OCM Boses had a lot of discussion about plans for next year. Good, good conversation. We met with Dr. Bill Daggett, talking a lot about data in New York State and also gentleman by the name of Greg Bear. So we'll be bringing some more things to you based on that information as we continue to meet as a region together. But there was not a whole lot that was happening last week. So we'll be updating the board more with some of the committee work and some of the things that our BPTs met and we're starting to work for their goals for next year.
Okay. Thank you. Board of Education comments?
I got one. I just want to say, we, we kicked off the, the North Stars basketball camp today. It's going on until Thursday and then another one, not next week, but the following week. We have about a little over a hundred kids. But the most important thing is that it's not just kids from our district. It's kids from a lot of other districts. Off the top of my head, I can name about five and there's probably more. Um, that just means we're doing something right in this district. So excellent job to Coach Kyle Martin, Coach Beth Bonin, Coach Steve Miner and myself were running this camp and we should have a good week. So.
Hey, thank you. Other comments?
I, I turn, I turned my mic on first because I knew that we would have to hear from you as well. I just want.
It's a new board.
Um, I, I just want to congratulate you and the entire math department because whether it's an exceptional cohort or whatever it may be, seven points on an exam from one year to the next to me is extremely impressive. So congratulations. Hopefully we get some workshops into the, you know, algebra two and geometry and all that stuff. But I just wanted to say that that's great news and makes me feel really good about the direction that our education's going in.
Thank you.
I want to talk a little bit about a first in central New York. Last week at Lemoine, superintendents, including our Dan Bowles from all over central New York, teachers and school board members attended what was an equity conference, which was phenomenal. We went through different topics to say that everybody has a chance here. So thank you, Dan, for going to that. I was great to see a lot of other superintendents there. And we will carry this forth with our DEI conference. I just have to say, if Matt was here, all the work that's going on at Allen Road, it's exciting every morning. Allen Road has a brand new sign that I can actually read when I drive by it. And thanks to the maintenance department for that. And today there were six huge trucks by my driveway, getting ready to make a new driveway there. So a lot of good work's happening in our schools. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to routine action items and I'll look for consideration or approval of the minutes, the organizational meeting and the regular board meeting of July tenth. A motion, please. Motion, Mr. Thorn, second from Mr. Luden. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. And it's probably our policy. When we vote yes, no, we do not see the names. Is that the way we do it? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Thank you. That is carried. Motion, please, to place B and C on routine action items together. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. These are the classification and placement of disabled students in preschool and home instruction. So items B and C are before you. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Thank you. That is carried. Item A, discussion action items, appointments of Board of Education committees, motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Mr. Segru, second from Mr. Luden. Those are before you. They were put on the agenda today, but I did send that out in an email yesterday. So I want to make sure everybody was fine, didn't have any questions. Okay. Yes, sir.
Which was great. If for some reason, like my, my legislative committee, if you cannot attend, please let me know and we can get another board member to come to that meeting. I think that's important. And it could be executive committee or it could be policy committee. If you can't make it, please let the chair know and, and to get somebody else. I think it's very important. Thank you.
No, thanks for pointing that out, you know, especially when we get into budget subcommittee and things like that. It's good to have as many eyes on that as possible. The other discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Thank you. Item B, marketable and non-marketable surplus. Motion placed that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorn, second from Mr. Marizio. Excuse me. That is before us. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Thank you. C, resolution approved submission of lease agreement. It stayed at motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Luden. That is before us. Any questions, concerns?
Um, I just want to make a quick comment that I think that the district did a great job of rolling this out and doing it in a way that would be what is best to keep as many of our students together as possible. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. That's true. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Thank you. That I am is carried. D, acknowledgement of the appointment of an impartial hearing officer. Motion to place that before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Any questions? Concerns? Okay. All in favor. Pose and that is carried. And E is placed that before us, please. E and F, I'm going to group together because they're amendments. I'll explain that in a minute. E, Mr. Marizio, motion, second from Mr. Thorn. That is before us. E and F, we're amending what we did at the organizational meeting because we have a new name for a principal at Gillette Road. So that is for the dignity for all students that coordinator and the petty cash person in charge. So that's standard. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Just a quick acknowledgement, not quick because they spent some years here, but acknowledgement of our retirees, Christopher Maloney, maintenance worker two, retired twenty five point three years of service. And Leslie Cobb, a teaching assistant with twenty point three years of service. So we thank them for their service and wish them luck when their retirement date approaches this year.
I, I have a little comment about that.
Yes.
Because I know one of the people, Christopher Maloney, looked at the number of years in maintenance. That's remarkable. And he was a Mr. Fix It. When I was a teacher in my first life, he had to come my room many times for my sink and other things. Just very personable. If I was working on something, unless I want to talk to him, he did his job and I did mine. So just a wonderful person. His father was a principal in our district for many, many years, elementary. He's a community person and I wish Chris a lot of fortune in his retirement. Just a wonderful man. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion, please, place instructional personnel report A before us. Motion from Mr. Segru, second from Mr. Thorn. That is before us. Any discussion?
I'd like to have taken out of instructional personnel report for a separate vote on the involuntary transfers. Lake Shore to Cicero, Cicero High School and Cicero High School to Lake Shore Physical Education and then the involuntary transfer from Cicero High School Music to two days at Cicero L. And the reason I'm doing this, can I say it now or do I?
You can pull those without, we don't need a motion or second. You can just pull those. Yes.
All right. My concern is I do not like using involuntary transfers in this district. Years ago, they weren't there. Also, when I was on the board previously, very few times they were used. I can see a point when they can be used, but I do not feel it is in the benefit of the children of this district. That's why I'm sitting here for, is for the benefit of the kids in the district. I don't see this helping students. I see it helping adults. Thank you.
Okay. So what we have before us is instructional personnel report A minus the amendments. Those three were the amendments to the July tenth meeting. So we're pulling those out. We'll vote on those separately. Any discussion on the rest of personnel A? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. All right. We have before us the items personnel A, the three involuntary transfers, which were listed as amendments to the July tenth meeting. A motion placed those before us. Motion, Mr. Luden, second from Dr. Kramer. Those are before us. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed. Okay. And that is carried. Support staff personnel report B, motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Thorn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. That is carried and administrative, excuse me, administrative personnel report C, a motion placed that before us, please. Motion, Mr. Segru, second from Mr. Luden. That is before us. Okay. We have a tenure on there. So congratulations, but ready? All in favor? Pose and that is carried. Okay. I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. The motion is move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing four legal items with no action to follow and two personnel matters. No action to follow. If I could get a second. Second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Questions or additions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. And a motion for adjournment, please. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorn. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. We are adjourned at seven seventeen. Thank you.